Hey. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Welcome to the Board of Trustees meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Would the clerk please take attendance?
Mayor Citron?
Present.
Trustee? Trustee Casker?
Present.
Trustee Sherer?
Present.
And trustee Shaw.
I'd ask everybody to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, both in person and on Zoom. I appreciate the attendance. Of course, this is my first meeting as the mayor of the village of Tuxedo Park, and I'm very honored to assume that position. And I want to thank everybody who supported me. And for those people who did not support me, I hope that during the course of the next 18 months, I will gain, if not your support, at least grudging acceptance. So with that being said, I'd also like to talk briefly about Mayor McFadden. I think we owe a debt of gratitude for Mayor McFadden's long service to the village, both as mayor. He served separately six years just before me. He served two years in the earlier part of the century. He served as a trustee, and he accomplished a great deal during the course of his various tenures. And I want everyone to know that sometime in the near future, we'll have an appropriate ceremony honoring his service, and there'll be an announcement, and everyone will be invited to attend. And I look forward to that day. So, thank you, Mayor McFadden. I know you're in attendance on Zoom. And on behalf of the village of Tuxedo Park, we thank you for all that you've done and for we wish you all the best in the future. As mayor, one of the first duties I have is to select a deputy, because you never know how many years you may be given by the Lord, and you never know how long you'll be on this earth. And I think it's important that the village have a deputy mayor in the event that I'm either no longer here or incapacitated or even go on vacation. And I thought long and hard about that process, and the law requires me to designate a member of the Board of Trustees. And I reached a conclusion, and I asked trustee Chris Casker to my left if he would assume that position, and he has graciously agreed to do the same. So I am going to read a proclamation, which is required, apparently, under New York state law with respect to the position of deputy mayor, as written by our august attorney. And we will read it into the record. That's the wrong email. Just give me a minute. Do you happen to have it, Attorney Dashout?
I do, Mayor.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Sure, we don't want to keep people, so that's fine. While we look up the exact language I need for the purpose of the deputy mayor, Elizabeth Doherty, our village clerk, will swear in the two trustees who were elected in the most recent village election. Gentlemen?
Is it one at a time?
We could do it together if you want.
Let's do it together. Let's be efficient.
I?
I, Joshua Sherer.
I, Paul Brooke.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will fully discharge.
And that I will fully discharge.
The duties of trustee of the village of Tuxedo Park.
The duties of trustee of the village of Tuxedo Park.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. You're good. Just a signature.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I'm now going to read the statement required by the Attorney General and the laws of the state of New York. Whereas the office of the Attorney General in a previous opinion opined that a mayor has authority under village law, section 4-400, to revoke the appointment of a deputy mayor prior to the expiration of the term of the deputy mayor. And upon such revocation, the office of deputy mayor becomes vacant, and the new deputy mayor shall be appointed by the mayor. Now, therefore, the mayor revokes the appointment of Deputy Mayor Tinka Shaw as deputy mayor for the balance of the village's 2023-24 official year. Whereas the office of deputy mayor is now vacant, therefore, the mayor hereby appoints trustee Christopher Casker as deputy mayor for the balance of the 2023-24 village official year. Elizabeth, would you swear in Deputy Mayor Casker?
I, Christopher Casker.
I, Christopher Casker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of deputy mayor of the village of Tuxedo Park.
The duties of deputy mayor of the village of Tuxedo Park.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, Chris.
All right, now we move on to the reports. And first up is Police Chief Conklin on the Zoom.
Good evening, everyone. So for the month of August, we had 231 calls for service, three criminal cases. One includes a village ordinance summons that was issued. We issued 11 traffic tickets. We issued 15 warnings for vehicle and traffic violations. We responded to four fire alarms or four fire calls. One medical call we had. We assisted the town of Tuxedo Police Department twice. We assisted another agency one time. And our patrol mileage was about 2,515 miles for the month. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, chief. The next report will be provided by the DPW supervisor, Jeff Voss. You can come on up and... All right.
There are some things on here. I'm trying not to repeat myself, but I mentioned last month. Because the, I wrote the report last month was done for when the regular meeting was supposed to happen, but it was delayed a week or two. So there are some things on here that weren't on the last one. We repaired and blocked out the gutter on Westlake Road, did some weed whacking. We walked down on three, Westlake Road, Tuxedo Road. We cut grass throughout the village, including the racetrack. We installed a new catch basin and drain pipe on my plane. We repaired a storm drain on Tower Hill Road, had potholes on Ridge Road. We whacked Mountain Farm Road just before school started. Worked with Nelson Tree Service on tree removals on Tower Hill Loop and Pine Road. We worked with the divers hired by the village over at the Wee Wad Dam to remove some lodge, stop logs. We made some minor roofing repairs to the village office roof here. Clean drains and catch basins. We repaired a door at the police station. We recently installed a new catch basin on Summit Road. And we did some work on some rotten transmission lines on one of our dump, small dump trucks. For water and sewer, we repaired the service line that feeds one of the buildings that the sewer plant had been leaking. So we repaired that. We also repaired a water leak on East Lake Stable Road. Did various mark outs for Dick Safe. We're working currently on locating manholes for the village engineers to do their I and I work upcoming. Obtained weekly water meter readings. And then for meters, there were no, all the broken or inoperable meters have been repaired last month. I mentioned that. John will be starting this quarter's reading soon, so I'm sure there's going to be a couple that are malfunctioning. So as soon as we find out, you know, get that list, then we'll get those fixed. As far as irrigation meters, two were installed, one well meter. And I believe he has an appointment tomorrow to install another meter, so.
Okay. I received an email from a resident who was talking about trees, dead trees, on Wee Wad Road that she believes are in danger of falling, and possibly, she says she walks that road with her children every day. I was just wondering, do we have any process for examining the state of the trees on Wee Wad Road that might be in danger of falling?
To be honest with you, Mayor, there are a lot of trees on a lot of roads that need to be taken care of. You know, we do the ones we're comfortable with, but the bigger ones, we just can't handle. So, you know, I don't know what the village plans to do. If they plan to try to get a contractor to get prices on the roads. I am currently getting prices for, there's one really bad one on Tuxedo Road across from the Valley, Valley Road barrier. For that, and there's three or four down at the end of East Lake Road on the triangle that need to be taken care of. So I am currently getting prices to have that done by an outside contractor.
Okay, I appreciate it.
And we just need them to get them down, you know. We could take care of everything else. It's just, it's not safe for us to try to do it.
Well, I guess it's something we'll discuss at a future board meetings in terms of, we want to be sure that no one is subject to injury if a tree should fall, whether it be in a storm or just spontaneously, which I guess can happen every now and then. Thank you, Supervisor Voss.
One other thing I'd like to mention, if the board could do so, is send a letter to residents about cutting back the brush that overhangs the roads from the property. There are some really bad areas. For snow plowing, it just brings the trucks up, because you have to try to push it back as far as you can. You know, if you look at most of my trucks, all the right side mirrors are broken, missing plastic, and if you could, if there could be some kind of notification sent out, that would be great.
Remind the residents of property maintenance issues involving the brush near the roads. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. The next, the next report will be given by the inspector-in-adviser to the Board of Trustees. John Ledwith.
Thank you. We had one certificate of occupancy issued to 126 Summit Road. We have a handful of violation issues before the court. I did meet with our new counsel about a week ago. We reviewed some of those matters to bring him up to speed to see how they can be managed going forward. Number of inspections were conducted on some of the active projects. The Paze project on Tower Hill Road East is going well. The Rifkin project on 97 Westlake Road, they're working on their landscaping. That's going fairly well. And there's half a dozen other projects, including the Perna project and the Klein project that are proceeding without any troubles. I did notify Mr. Overton up on Camp Comfort Road to cut back the overgrowth before school started. He gladly did that a few days before school started. And I believe Orange Rockland is scheduled to remove a tree on Pepperidge Road. There's a very, very large tree on Pepperidge Road that they'll be removing shortly. Been in touch with Verizon to try to get them to make some repairs to their wires and hardware. And several other, several other small projects are going very well. Jeff and his crew have acknowledged they'll be able to help out make the ceiling repairs at the water plant that we discussed a few months ago. Weston and Sampson delivered an engineering plan to us that our gentleman can follow. And if we need any advice, we'll contact Weston and Sampson. Summary, that's about it. We do have a small leak in the roof down at the police station. I met with the contractor that replaced the roof last November. He's going to come up when it rains to see if he can isolate where the leak is coming from. And I'll speak to Jeff tomorrow to see if we can make some repairs to a window and a couple stones on the third floor, where there's already some grass and vines growing out of the stonework, which probably is not helping things. So in summary, that's all. Otherwise, going fairly well.
Thank you, John. Trustee Sherer has an update for us on community choice aggregation.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'd hope to have more information on this, but I think it's still worth providing the community with an update. We're just waiting for some additional information from the CCA Administrator, Jules. Jim Hayes, who's in the audience here, myself and members of the town of Tuxedo last week had a meeting with the administrator, really to touch base, because we haven't seen any proposals from them for, what, I would say almost a year now, maybe. And, and the reason there hasn't been a lot of interaction is the way New York law works, is they can't propose a plan to us if the current rates are higher than they were on a lookback period for 12 months with a caveat if it has renewable. Now typically renewables are more expensive on the margin than fossil fuels. And, you know, they believed rightfully that we're looking for the best cost of energy. But we said, listen, there's a couple of ways to look at this. First of all, trust politicians to develop rules that impede progress. You really should be looking at forward energy curve. So you can, if you can lock in better rates today relative to what the curve says energy's going to cost in the future, you'd want to do that. And so they're going to be coming back to us with a proposal for 50% renewable, 50% fossil fuel, and then 100% renewable, which allows you to get around that rule, the lookback rule. And so I believe, we'll see, I'd hope to have more information today. We'll be educating the community on the CCA program and the options that are available. And it is an opt-out program. So anyone that doesn't want to participate, doesn't have to participate. So again, this is not anything that's being jammed down anyone's throat. I just want to be very clear about that. But it is something that if you choose to, you can potentially save money relative to what you otherwise might based on the forward curve and do something good for the environment as well. And I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'd love to ask Jim Hayes if I missed anything or if there's anything he wants to add.
Perfectly acceptable. Go ahead.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Next item on the agenda, we're going to pass. Both Mr. Tanari and Ms. Tavani are unable to make the meeting, so we will reschedule their presentation for the next board meeting. The water department reports are attached to the record. The next item is the meeting minutes from the last meeting of August 30th of 2023. I was not present at that meeting, so I would ask the deputy mayor to handle that particular item.
Sure. I believe everybody's seen a copy of the minutes, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from August 30th, 2023, regular meeting.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Oh, favor?
Hi.
Motion approved.
Thank you, deputy mayor. We next have a change in what was the agenda for the past several years, and I would just like to make a comment about it. The previous, in the previous years, public comment was limited to one session, two minutes on agenda items only. I've decided, for the purpose of my administration, that we were going to open that up. And what we're going to have from this point on, it'll be a trial, so we'll see how it develops, is we're going to give everybody three minutes to talk about any subject they believe is appropriate related to the village. So you will no longer be limited to those items that are on the agenda. Now, there will be certain rules that I would like to set for that, and that is, I don't, I want these comments to remain civil. I don't want any ad hominem or personal attacks on anyone. But feel free, for those three minutes that you have, and you have them twice, once at the beginning of the meeting now and once at the end of the meeting, to make whatever comments you want that relate to the village and the village government. Also, there was, there was at some time years ago a trustee comment section. And I believe, at least the meetings that I've been to and watched, is that the trustees generally comment on the agenda items and sometimes don't comment at all. And I'm opening up the floor, once public comment is complete, to allow the trustees to speak for any length of time they want to on any issue they believe is appropriate to be addressed by the village government. So hopefully, I haven't, I haven't created a Wild West here. And that rule applies not only to the people who have come in person, but to those of you on Zoom who wish to speak. So we'll start with the public comment period. I will ask, John, are you able to at least keep a three-minute time limit? And we'll give you a little notice if you're reaching that particular point, but we'll start with the room. And is there anybody who would like to speak publicly on any issue involving the village? Please raise your hand, and if you would, take the podium, identify yourself and your address, and then go for it. Sir?
Hello, everyone. My name is Neil Whittles. I'm a homeowner at Tuxedo Park for the last 26 years. Mayor Mark, I want to give my congratulations. One request, one email a month, that's all. Just one. Frankly, my reason for speaking, oh, by the way, my wife yields her three minutes to me, so I have six.
Well, let's see how that goes.
My purpose for speaking, which is not competent, is I want to, it's an inquiry about my previous board approvals that I had heard about. That bothered. Under the previous mayor who governed with intimidation and threats, of which I was subject.
I said when I started, I do not appreciate or want personal attacks.
It's not a personal attack.
It's bordering on a personal attack, doctor.
An attack on me personally.
I can, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, if I, if I have to, if I have to, I will change, change this. Please discuss substantive matters that are of concern to you without reference to the prior mayor or any members of this board in a negative, in a negative way.
That's fine.
Thank you, sir.
The words transparency and recusal are commonly referred to from this board, and I've heard it many times from the previous mayor. However, voting in the dark of night through executive session, I wouldn't call that to be transparent. I don't think it is. Recusal of one's vote as a matter of voting on the board is all well and good, but not when the board votes in most issues in unison. That is not recusal, as far as I'm concerned. Although I understand the need for this board to make decisions, I do appreciate that full disclosure to the village residents is of utmost importance. With a small village as ours, no decision should be made on this board without a complete vetting from all the residents. So I'd like to inquire about some board decisions that were made on behalf of the residents that I don't think were vetted properly by the board. Number one, 47 Clubhouse Road seems to be a problem to me. I know Mr. Brooke or Ms. Gilbert, whoever it was, I don't know. But they had bought this property from the previous owners, who I understand were very good residents.
Give him another three for his wife. Thank you.
Were very good residents and did a lot to the property to improve it. They ended up in litigation with the village trying to get full, full-term occupancy of their property, but wasn't able to, even after years and much money spent in litigation. They finally put it up for sale for $325,000. Brooke and Gilbert seemed to have bought it for $200,000, and many people didn't even know it was for sale, frankly. Anyway, it's not that the way it was bought, it was how it was bought. The full occupancy did not occur until the, before, it was before the property was actually closed on the sale. And then the sale was closed after this board approved the full occupancy. And I understand it was in an executive session. And what I don't understand is why was it approved in executive session? There's no reason why it shouldn't. The board spent thousands of dollars defending a lawsuit, fighting the full occupancy. And in the end, when a new owner, Mr. Brooke or Gilbert, whoever it was, it was approved expeditiously. Anyway, I would like to have some clarity on that issue, why the residents weren't vetted, why it was, why it was approved in executive session. The next issue is, is about the Circumstance Clubhouse Road, stepping stones, the pathway, but also has a sewage line running through it. Frankly, this is a village property that has been violated by the neighboring, the adjacent properties. There's a, it doesn't even appear to be open to the public anymore. There's, there's gates involved. The clubhouse house to the north of this path had poured some concrete steps in violation of this path. All the stepping stones are in place. It's, the runoff has, has, has washed a lot of the stone, the gravel stone from between the steps. Anyway.
Dr. Whittles, we gave you six minutes. You'll have some more time at the end of the session. So thank you for your comments. I made some notes, and you understand there's another six minutes due you at the end of the meeting, whenever that might be, which depending upon how much public comment we have could be well after nine o'clock. Anybody else in the room wish to make a statement? Yes, Mr. McGregor.
Stuart McGregor, 11th St., my wife is here, but I won't take the six minutes. Actually, it'll be very, it'll be very brief, but it affects the same issue. And I just wanted to clear up something from the last meeting when the 47 Clubhouse was on the agenda. During that time, I asked a number of questions that I really felt, based on my research and review, I didn't get some very straight answers to. But be that as it may, I first of all, wanted to appreciate the service of Mayor McFadden and what he's done for this community during the time he served, and welcome you as a new mayor. and welcome you as a new mayor. And secondly, my whole point is that at the last meeting, with respect to Forty-Seven Clubhouse, I had with me the pleadings from all the litigation that took place. But it was not my time to pick that up. But the mayor made some, a former mayor made some comments at that time that he would be happy to have the village attorneys look into the details of this. And from my perspective, I just wanted to make it clear that I'm a retired attorney, and I don't want to see the village attorneys, I don't know whether they've been instructed to do that before this meeting or not, but at this point in time, as a result of my bringing up this issue, I do not want to see the village attorneys spending any money looking into this issue at this particular point in time. You know, we've spent enough money on attorney's fees. So from this perspective, I would just, I know what I have. I, I know this place for, you know, 75 years, and so I'll leave it with that. And I just wanted to be clear, we don't need to spend any more legal fees on this issue at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anybody else want to speak from the room? Okay, well, you'll have a second chance at the end of the meeting. How about folks on Zoom? Anybody raise their hand at this point, John? Wow, okay, surprised me. I thought for sure we were going to be here a long time, but you've got a second chance at the end of the meeting, so who knows? Now, at this point, we've reached trustee comments. And as I said, the trustees have the right to speak publicly on any issue they believe is appropriate, and they have no time limit, of course. So I'll start with the deputy mayor. Anything you'd like to talk about, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you for appointing me as your deputy. I appreciate the trust and confidence. Hopefully, there won't be an occasion for me to have to exercise that duty, but if there is, I'm ready and willing. I want to thank former Deputy Mayor Tinker Shaw for her leadership over the last couple of years, as well as that of Mayor McFadden. I learned a lot. I do want to add a comment based on what the superintendent, DBW superintendent, mentioned about the overhang. If he was here, I would love to know I helped remove some of that in a fire truck last week, or a week and a half ago, when we responded to a structured fire caused by lightning. And I'd like to make a public service announcement. If you, please, if you're parking on the street, please be considerate of your neighbors and whether an emergency vehicle can get by you. The reason I took out that overhang was because a car was parked facing the wrong way, giving himself plenty of room to get out on the driver's side, not even on the driver's side. And I couldn't get the fire truck through that without taking out bushes on the side. If that was, it was Tower Hill Loop, so I could have gone the other way, but I didn't know that, responding to a fire. If that's your neighbor's house, or your neighbor needs an ambulance, that's actually a pretty big deal. Not something that volunteer drivers need to have to worry about. So I would just ask that you be considerate and think about that when you guys are parking on the street. Other than that, I'm looking forward to this next section, stage of the administration and the village government, and I'm happy to be here.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Sharer?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Trustee Shaw?
Just, I was wondering if you had had a chance to look at the candidates that we have interviewed for planning board and bar?
Yes. I have spoken with the, I have spoken with the village attorney with respect to the purported removal by the previous mayor of Joanne Hansen and Richard Witty, who is here tonight, and whether that removal was appropriate under state law. And I've received an opinion from the village attorney that at this point, Chair Hansen and Member Witty remain on the planning board. So at this point in time, there are no vacancies on the planning board. There will be a vacancy after the reorganization meeting, and I intend to meet with the candidates, and then we will discuss who is the most appropriate replacement for that particular opening. And I'll welcome everybody's opinion on that. Right? Trustee Brooke?
Thank you. I think as we start a new process with the new mayor, and I do wish him the best in this, there were lots of issues that arose in this brutal election campaign with innuendo and, and one-sided comment. And what I wanted to do was set the record straight, ask the new mayor to clarify some observations, and, and explain that in executive session, following this meeting, some of what we were going to look at. Okay? So, Mr. Mayor, you represented to the village that you were not connected with Claudio's efforts in the campaign, in the early stages. Was that true? And if so, why was your name initially the petitioner on the first request for judicial intervention?
First of all, trustee Brooke, I do not see this as the appropriate forum for that question, but in respect to your position, I will give you an answer. And the answer is this. As I said at the time, at the end, on the election day, when a petition was filed, that I did not know the attorney. I had never spoken to that attorney. I had never seen any petition to review. And I was just as surprised as everybody else was when the attorney showed up and served that filed petition, including the TRO and the Order to Show Cause upon the village and me and Mayor McFadden. I had no idea that that was coming, and I cannot explain to you how a lawyer I've never met and never spoken to would insert my name as the petitioner on a piece of litigation, because to me, that's almost unethical. And I had no knowledge of what was taking place or about to take place, and I have no other explanation for it.
Like I said, the first comment, it says, I'm very relieved to hear that, because it talks about, it talks to the fact that you are an independent character, and Claudio is a very different person. And what he has done in some cases is very challenging to the village. The TRO has cost us significant money, order of magnitude, by my estimate, probably a thousand bucks per house in the village. So it's a, it's a, and fortunately, we had, on Monday of this week, the judge issued a report, and the report suggested that, you know, no decision uncovered, no illicit or untoward conduct by any village official, and in fact, only served to delay the seamless and peaceful transition to power. Do you have any realistic belief that the village was guilty of fraud or illegality?
Are you posing that question to me?
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think, I don't think that that's, that's an appropriate question to put to me. I think it's somewhat rhetorical. And let me respond by saying this, okay? Everybody knows, at this point in time, that I filed cross-claims with respect to certain issues that I believe were relevant to my candidacy in order to protect my candidacy. And those issues were strictly related to the question of the legality and validity of certain absentee ballots. And my cross-claim was very specific. And for the purpose of answering your question, I'm going to read into the record, I'm going to read into the record the four categories of absentee ballots that I believe were invalid, or at least seeking a judicial ruling on whether they were invalid. I challenged and filed a cross-claim on the following absentee ballots, and only on these particular ballots. Absentee ballots that were submitted by persons who reside and are registered outside the boundaries of the Village of Tuxedo Park. Now, think about that. Those are people that don't even live here, that had, that submitted absentee, had the right, were given absentee ballots and voted. Absentee ballots that were submitted by persons who reside and are registered outside the boundaries, I'm sorry, I read that. Absentee ballots were submitted by persons who were not registered voters in the Village of Tuxedo Park by the statutory deadline of June 9th of 2023. Were all required to play by the rules. And one of the rules is, to collect an absentee ballot, you have to be registered. It's very simple. We know that. And I had the belief that there were certain absentee ballots that were provided to people who would not register to vote. Another of the four, absentee ballots were submitted by persons who voted in person on June 20th of 2023. There were two individuals who not only submitted absentee ballots, but voted in person. Now, there's no double voting permitted in this country. And who were those two individuals? This is kind of ironic. One of them was Claudio Guazzoni, okay? The other was the mayor's son. Think about that. They essentially offset each other, I assume, but they still couldn't vote twice. And finally, and this was the one where there is no law, okay? There's no decision on this particular issue. Requests for absentee ballots were submitted by persons not registered to vote at the time they requested the absentee ballot. Now, let's think about that. The request for absentee ballot requires a certification under oath that you are registered. And if you are not registered, you are violating that certification. And the question becomes, and it has not been answered during the course of this litigation, can you cure that violation of law by registering properly before the election? I wanted a judicial ruling on that, and I didn't get it from the lower court, and I didn't get it from the appellate division. But that's what I wanted, because that would have made a difference in determining which ballots could be counted and which ballots could not be counted. I didn't know I wasn't going to get a ruling. I requested the ruling. The court chose not to give me one. But I needed to put in those objections in order to protect my candidacy. And that was my only involvement in the Guazzoni litigation. It was on those points alone. With respect to any allegations that Guazzoni made about the former mayor or any ballot collection process, I rejected those. And with respect to any claims about the former mayor's activities, I put in papers where I opposed an application to include those in the lawsuit. I didn't want the court to hear that. I only wanted the court to hear my four objections to the absentee ballot. I hope that answers the public's question on this, and I hope the public now understands that my role was very limited. The last thing I want to say is, there is a huge legal bill from the attorneys representing the village, affirmed by the name of Berger and Santiago. That bill, my understanding, and I've only been in office for two days, I researched it, is almost $165,000. Now, how did a bill of $165,000 develop over three months? What type of litigation was taking place? What kind of aggressive lawyering was being done by the firm of Berger and Santiago? I looked at the filings in both the lower court and the appellate division with respect to filings by each of the attorneys involved in the litigation representing the village, representing trustee Sharer and trustee Brooke and myself. And after counting up the filings, and the filings could have been appellate briefs, they could have been motions, they could have been affirmations, but the type of work that was being generated by this particular case, which is now over, and let me tell you what the numbers are, and these are specific filings. Mr. Berger, between the lower court and the appellate division, on behalf of the village, filed 26 substantial documents and attachments on separate occasions. Ms. Gilbert, representing trustee Sharer and trustee Brooke, filed 14 substantial documents, motions, briefs, et cetera, et cetera. I filed eight, okay? My involvement was the most limited, and of course, Guazzoni's attorney filed lots of documents. My involvement in this case was the most limited, because what I wanted from the judge was the most limited. And that was a ruling on the absentee ballots, which I never got. But when the ballots were counted, I had a six-vote lead, and now I'm standing or sitting here as your mayor. And that's, that's my version of what took place. And you can accept it, you can reject it, but that's the record, ladies and gentlemen.
So let me, let me cut to one last question.
Sure.
The question is, there is litigation outstanding still relating to the open, open-meeting law violations relating to the villagers' retention of Berger and Burns.
Yeah.
Are you involved in that litigation with Claudio? What is the motive for commencing that litigation? And, and there is ongoing litigation, and this will continue until that stuff is withdrawn. But what is your intention? And what is your fiduciary obligation with respect to terminating that litigation?
Sure. I categorically say I have no involvement in that litigation. I've never discussed that litigation with anybody. I appeared in court with my wife only to see the judge, who was also presiding over the Guazzoni litigation, how she would react to, to this, this open-meetings law issue. As the mayor of the Village of Tuxedo Park, I intend to vigorously defend the claims that Guazzoni has made against the village with respect to that litigation. I was not involved in commencing this suit. I had no involvement in the, in the proceedings. And now, I assume the responsibility as mayor to defend against Guazzoni's claims to the best of my ability through the attorneys Harris Beach, who are, were retained to defend the village in this, in that particular matter. There's no question about my loyalty on that case, and there shouldn't be.
I am, I am delighted to hear it. Just by way of information to the public here, during executive session today, we are going to look at the issue of retention of counsel for fee application related to the election TRO defense or litigation. The TRO was filed. We were not allowed to talk until it was lifted. It was enormous amount of noise, but we were under a legal obligation to say nothing. The appellate division stayed the TRO that paralyzed the village. The Supreme Court dismissed the petition, the cross-petition, and ruled that the application to further amend the petition to allege fraud against the village where the former mayor lacked basic factual components of a fraud claim. Under this counsel fee application, whatever the costs were of the village may be retaining counsel to be reimbursed by the counterparties, because there was no basis for this suit. There is no public advocate in Tuxedo Park. It's a very clear case, and that litigation, that issue of whether we litigate for reimbursement of all of our fees will be addressed in executive session. And we will not talk about that other than to acknowledge that that's what we're doing.
Well, with, with respect to that, let me just state my position. And my position is, I never sought a TRO. My motion to add cross-claims was a contested motion where all parties had the chance to be heard, and the judge ruled in my favor and allowed me to add those limited cross-claims relating to the absentee ballot. And my understanding of the law is that the purpose of reimbursing attorney's fees to the victims of a vacated TRO are done because that TRO is sought ex parte. In other words, only one side goes to the court and asks the judge for relief. The other side doesn't have a chance to speak, because they're not even there. And the judge, based on representations by one side, in this case, Claudio Guazzoni and his attorney, issued that TRO. I had no involvement in that. I was named as a respondent. I received service as a respondent. And it was only once the litigation began that I made a contested motion where everybody had a chance to oppose my motion, which the judge granted. And that is separate and apart from the right to collect attorney's fees for a one-sided application to get a TRO. Again, as I said, to which I had no involvement. And that's my statement with respect to what trustee Brooke just said, regardless of what the board decides to do. And that's And that's the position I will take if I am named in any collection matter for attorney's fees. Anybody else on the board have a comment? Okay, now we can move on. We have a consent agenda, but I want to make sure that everybody agrees that these items should be on the consent agenda. An archiving written reports, add all written reports to the permanent record and approve the minutes from August thirtieth. I I think that was already done. And the resignation of part-time police officer Ligan Esposito of September sixteen, two thousand and twenty three. Do any of the trustees object to those two consent items?
No.
Okay.
I have a question. Were we not? Oh, all of the written reports of this meeting.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay.
No objection.
All right.
And no question.
Okay, great. So I would move I would move that the Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda items A and B as set forth. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Old business. Anybody have any old business they want to address with the the board? Any of the trustees? No? Okay. New business. There's a point A of new business is a resolution to strike the mayor's salary line. Let me explain that and also explain what I've been advised by the village attorney. I campaigned, one of the issues I campaigned on was that I was going to waive the mayor's salary. And I did that. We don't have to get into it, but I did it. Historically, the mayor was never paid. Mayor McFadden was awarded a salary, and I chose to waive it and said I wouldn't take it. When I when I worked out this agenda, I thought we could prepare a resolution that would strike that that salary from the budget. Essentially, it wouldn't exist, and no one gets paid, and we continue as we are. I've been advised by the village attorney that there is state law that does not permit diminution or extinguishment of an official salary without a public referendum. So once you've got a salary in place, you can abolish it unless the public agrees. Now, I have certain plans for public referenda in the near future, but it does not include abolishing the mayor's salary. So with the attorney's advice, I have essentially going to waive that salary. It will remain in the budget as a budget line, but it will not be paid to me. And essentially, those funds will remain in the general fund from this point to the end of the budget year. So we need not vote on that. It would not be permissible, as I've been advised. Item B involves discussions to allow Orange County Board of Elections to run future elections. This is, we've been through a miserable process. I I don't think anybody, regardless of how you feel about it and how it was conducted, it was brutal. It was brutal for Elizabeth as the village clerk. It was brutal for the the candidates who were involved. It was just brutal for the community. And I don't ever want to see us go through this type of crisis again. And the solution that I see is that we turn over our elections to the Orange County Board of Elections. The rules will be slightly different. Everybody's talked about whether you can cure the absentee ballots or not. That was an issue in before the lower court judge. And there are certain laws that apply to that that don't apply to village-run elections. But in light of what took place this year, I think we should begin the discussion to talk about transferring responsibility of the village elections to the county board from the beginning to the end and everything in the middle. And if any of the trustees have any thoughts about that now, otherwise, what we'll do is reach out to them and find out, first of all, what's the cost? We got to pay them to do it. And what the process would be to change the procedure for village elections to make them county-run elections. I'll open the floor.
I guess my question, I don't have the answer, obviously. But we did start to discuss this before you became mayor, because obviously, we were as horrified as you were by the mess that had been created. And I guess my real question is, what would really change, other than we're, you know, giving? Because at the end of the day, what created this mess, right? It was Claudio's lawsuit, which was unnecessary and simply delayed where we ended up and cost us a ton of money and divided this community. And so I guess my question would be, why would we give up control of our election to some so-called higher authority? I just, I don't know that it really changes anything, and I'm I'm willing to be educated on this.
Okay, well, let me, having been immersed in this, okay, as a litigant, I learned certain things. And one of the things I learned, we all have, we all heard the term curing of absentee ballots that have certain deficiencies. I don't know how many of you, I don't recall how many of you were at the camp, the initial count, where the three inspectors looked at every absentee ballot, finally, sometimes August tenth, and they rejected thirty-five ballots, okay? Those thirty-five ballots were rejected for a number of reasons. They were rejected because in the inspector's opinion, and it's just an opinion, the signatures didn't match, right? The registration signature and the ballot signature didn't match. They were rejected because signatures were missing. They were rejected for various reasons. Now, my understanding is, if the Board of Elections handles the election, those ballots, most of them, I'm not saying all of them, most of those ballots, the voters who cast those ballots would have been given the opportunity to cure those deficiencies. The Board of Elections would have sent letters to those voters and said, hey, we got a problem with your envelope, whatever that problem might be. But if you come up here and you aver that that's your signature or whatever the you fix whatever problem is, your ballot will be counted at the time of the canvass. So that's one difference between a village-run election, where there is no provision for that cure, and a county-run election, which will allow, will not disenfranchise the same number of people. And I see that as a major difference and a benefit to voters generally. Give them the opportunity to correct whatever error that was. Anything else? I mean, there are probably other differences in how the the elections are run, but I think that's an important point, especially in light of the fact that we had thirty-five ballots sitting on a table that have never been, have not been opened and will never be open and remain the subject of litigation. Because just to note, the mayor has filed an appeal of the order that put me in office, and we have to see what the appellate division does with that, and I'm certainly not going to make a prediction.
So I guess my question, and that's that's a valid and, I think, important distinction. My question would be, are we able to rectify those deficiencies at the local level? So once again, we're not giving the county control over our election.
My understanding of the law is that a deficient ballot in a village-run election, where Elizabeth Clerk is the chief election officer, and the inspectors are hired, even though their Board of Election designated inspectors are hired by the Board of Trustees and work directly for Elizabeth, there is no provision that allows voters to correct those absentee ballots.
Right, and there's nothing we could do as a board to change that.
We, we, there's nothing we can do as a, look, I'm not an election lawyer.
I understand.
Okay, Josh, I've I've been through this whole this whole wringer, and I I have my own election lawyer now with respect to his, his, with respect to the former mayor's litigation. So I'm not in a position to answer a question like that. I'm just raising it in this agenda as as a as a issue for, for look at. You know, we're not even there yet. But before the next election, we should consider it as an option to avoid what took place this year. And that's really about it.
Agreed.
Okay.
And I think in order to do this, this requires a public referendum as well.
It's it's subject to a permissive referendum. So the village does have authority under Article fifteen of the election law to transfer the authority to conduct elections to the county board. It's it's not routinely done. You know, we we look into this. I can share with you the memo that we put together.
Yeah. But. Have you shared it with the other with the trustees yet? Have they seen the memo? Okay, I haven't, I haven't seen the memo, but I've only been in office for two days.
So a permissive referendum means the public has to vote? Or we can make the decision as a board?
Mandatory referendum. A permissive referendum would title the public to file a petition asking that the the matter be put to a public vote.
So anybody in the public could trigger that percent of the voter signatures, and that would become something that the public has to vote?
That's correct. If if a proper petition were filed asking for the referendum vote, that's right. I forget off the top of my head what the required number of signatures are, but it's a certain percentage.
Okay. Yeah, I think it would be important to know what duties would be taken off of Elizabeth's plate.
Right.
Because I think that, I think if we can outsource some of the things that she has to do, regardless of the actual type of work, it helps her focus more on very specific village matters. And then, and then again, what the cost is.
Yeah.
And I mean, obviously, there's pros and cons, but I think we need to learn all the facts in order to make a decision.
Okay.
Well, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a literature that argues the pros and the cons. And I guess I'd love to see a, you know, a collection of relevant articles that each of us can review if we discuss it in the future.
And maybe find some villages that have done this and see what they, if they have lessons learned.
Yeah, same thing.
Yep. Okay, well, it's just the opening salvo of what will be a long-term discussion, you know? All right, so let's move on to audit of claims. We don't, Elizabeth is not here. Oh, oh, she is on the Zoom. Oh, thank you. There you are, hi, Elizabeth.
Can you hear me?
Would you take up for this section, audit of claims?
Sure. Can you hear me? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
You can, okay. Super. So so this past month, we had audit of claims as follows. General funds, the claims were in the amount of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, fifty-nine cents. The sewer fund claims were in the amount of seventy thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. And the water fund claims were in the amount of two hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars. And that was it.
Okay, thank you very much. Any budget transfers?
No.
Elizabeth?
Not at this time.
Okay, so we move. Yes, go ahead, Elizabeth.
Sorry, can I just ask a quick question? Just when you voted on the consent agenda, I just want to just clarify, was that all five of you voting aye?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Elizabeth. Now, closing comments. Again, the floor is open to speakers first in the room. Dr. Whittles, you're free to finish your comments if you if you wish. Okay, anybody else in the room have anything they want to say about what took place today or what might take place in the future? Yes?
One quick thing.
Sure. Mayor Neuhauser.
With bushes and trees, they could go together in a, emissive to the residents to just say, no, they took a big tree out on Tuxedo Road today, but I know it's something that we have to keep after residents, especially new folks, to remind them that it's a fifty-foot from the roadway that they need to keep safe from cars, pedestrians, blah, blah, blah. So anyway, it it could go in a letter or something. And also, the other suggestion I thought of was potentially putting a link on our village website about procedure for voting, who is allowed to vote? If you're a resident of Manhattan and vote there and you just bought a house here, you got, I mean, it's seems simple, but we'd never do it. And so in light of this, I think it might be.
There's actually a link on the Orange County Board of Elections website that you can verify your your registration status. So that.
So the link.
Yep, that should be put out as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Anybody else in the room? Yes, Mr. McGregor.
I'll take up the opportunity since it's a short meeting. That's something that goes back a while, but I'd just like to bring it up for future discussion by the board. And that is an issue that's long been, I believe, the center of the Tuxedo Village and Tuxedo Park community. And that is the walls, in terms of who owns the walls. Not necessarily, it doesn't come up until we have to replace a wall. And then we go to litigation, and we don't want to get decisions because nobody wants to be stuck with a a decision that perhaps they're not going to be happy with. But when you legally say, getting worried up, clearing a brush, things like that. You know, if there's walls on a property that that order a road, no matter whose wall it is, whether it's the village, and I don't want to give that responsibly to the D P W, but why don't we encourage the the owner of the property to to maintain those walls in terms of making sure that the weeds don't get in there? Because once weeds get into these dry walls and the walls in the winter, they collect moisture, they freeze, they break open. I think that's why we have so many walls falling down. So perhaps as time goes on, the village trustees could maybe in the website or whatever, encourage people to also look at the walls, not just brush.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Anybody, yes, Mrs. McGregor.
Eleven Stable Ward, I'd just like to make sure that the issue of forty-seven Clubhouse Road and the public easement stay in the public eye with respect to who is responsible for any improvements.
We appreciate that. And as you know, at the last mini, it was referred to the bar, and they'll make their recommendations. And from my perspective, in terms of that improvement, I I think it actually might even be a planning board issue, because it's sort of infrastructure. But that will make that determination as a board.
So the issue is who pays for what?
Well, yes, yes. And 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 that that will be discussed. This is just the initial, the initial evaluation by the bar, and no determination has been made yet. Okay, obviously, the the landowner has to be involved in that in that discussion. And the landowner is not present here, even though, you know, trustee Brooke is here, but he is not the, he is not the title landowner. So she has to be given an opportunity. Okay, anybody else? Yes? Yes. Mr. Moon?
Mr. Mayor, John Moon, one seven nine Condomal Road. First of all, as a lawyer, I'll tell you, stop spending money on lawyers. The idea, it's like one of the few times a lawyer will actually tell the truth. Stop, stop it. Stop spending money on lawyers. The idea that you're going to hire more lawyers, you get prior fees in the United States where each side pays its own fees, absent extenuating circumstances. It's just not a good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I mean, that's just point one.
Oh, sorry. You've still got two and a half minutes.
Okay, I'll be brief. Thank you for your indulgence. Two, I live across the triangle from forty-seven Clubhouse Road. And when I near my neighbors get a driveway repaid or a soaking pool, I have a letter from the village to notify me of zoning changes and changes in property. We got, we got no such letter for forty-seven Clubhouse. And to trustee Kaster's point, he has to drive around fire trucks. And to Jeff Floss's point, he has to drive around snowplows. You know, forty-seven Clubhouse has no parking place in violation of the village code. So those cars park either in the road or on a public park triangle owned by the village, right? This presents a severe safety hazard. I would have made that presentation had I been given notice. But it appears as though it may have been some sort of backroom deal. I don't know. I don't want to be negative. But I'll note in one meeting, this Liz Gilbert, whoever she is, is billing the the village for legal fees. She got a property, and she got a very beneficial zoning adjustment. I just don't know what Ms. Gilbert's connection is to the village, but I wish I had it. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. How about anyone on Zoom have something?
Yeah, one person.
Okay, please unmute them and let them speak.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your on your win. I want to have a few comments here. First, I want to thank.
Just for, just for the record, state your name, so we've all got it in the record.
Claudio Guazzoni, Summit Road.
Thank you.
I want to thank trustee Scherer for making me out to be the bad guy here. I'm sure he has a hundred and ninety-five people that agree with him and maybe two hundred and five that have the opposite opinion. My question is directed to trustee Brooke, who it looks like he's a a a great real estate speculator. The 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 property that he just bought on forty-seven Clubhouse Road seems to have gained in in value overnight. Now, I'm I'm just going to ask nicely of Mr. Brooke. Would you consider reverting the C O O from the one that you recently got, which is a full-time C O O to one that has been of the past fifteen years, which is a seasonal C O O? Thank you.
Is that your only comment, Mr. Guazzoni?
It is. It's a question of Mr. Brooke. Would he consider reverting to to what it was and avoid further litigation?
Mr. Brooke, Mr. Brooke has no obligation to to answer questions directly with respect to that particular piece of. with respect to that particular piece of property. He can exercise his own judgment, but I am stating for the record that Mr. Brooke does not have an obligation to respond to that inquiry.
And also, Mr. Mayor, over four weeks ago, we have asked for a full foil on Mr. Brooke, Ms. Gilbert, and 47 Clubhouse Road, and how he might or might not have used his public office to self-enrich. We have not gotten one piece of foil. I really do not want to start further litigation to get foiled on. So please direct Mr. Brooke and village clerk, don't hurt him.
It's not Mr. Brooke who responds to a foil. It is the village attorney and the village clerk. And I will, I will, I will follow up on that if there is a legitimate request for the same.
Very good. And also, I'd like to have trustee Brooke remember that we are in America. We're not in England. Each party pays their own way. And if you start litigation against me, I'll be very happy to, to, to answer in the same suit. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Guazzoni. Anybody else? Oh, sure.
Hi, just to switch gears for a moment. Hear me?
Yes, Ms. Cottonore, could you state your name, please?
Yes, Elizabeth Cottonore, Weewaw Road. I have a comment about the, that the DPW might be interested in. Around the Weewaw was recently weed-whacked. The hill that was weed-whacked was full of native plants, Queen Ansellase and things like that on the slope that enter the water. And inadvertently, I'm suspecting, that was all cut down now to about an inch or so in height and is currently dying because it was cut so short. So I just want to ask if the DPW could be more cognizant of where and why it's cutting? I understand just along the edge of the road, but to go down along the lake where the plants are actually official, I would just ask them to be more thoughtful. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cottonore. Anybody else on Zoom have something they'd like to say to the Board? Last chance, anybody? Okay, that concludes our period of public comment. The next session, the next item on the agenda is trustee comments. And even though I'm not a trustee, there was something I wanted to mention. We got, we all got a letter or email last night, perhaps, from the Tuxedo Club about restocking the lake, right? And they sort of questioned the efficacy of why we should be restocking the lake. And a discussion was held last month about whether we would all contribute to putting a certain number of fish in the lake. I also ironically received the Tuxedo Club events calendar today. And I don't know if anybody knew, but there's this fishing derby that's been taking place from September 5th to September 24th. And it is an unlimited fishing derby, which means the club, on one hand, is saying, maybe we don't need to start, restock the lake. How can you, could you please justify it? And I'm directing this to Mr. Hayes, Professor Hayes, who has the knowledge to answer this question. But ironically, at the same time, they're running a fishing derby, and they're pulling fish out of the lake and an unlimited amount of fish for a period of close to three weeks. And so I don't know how we can, we can reconcile these two events. So they asked for a response by tomorrow, which I thought was a little abrupt. I think the email was sent on Tuesday. And I wrote to Randy St. John and asked him, what's going on with this fishing derby in light of the fact that you seem to be reluctant to contribute to restocking the lake? And his response was to me, well, it's, they're not going to take that many fish out, essentially. I mean, I'm going to put the email in the record, but the whole thing seems rather strange. I don't know if we should restock the lake. I'm not a fisheries expert. Professor Hayes, do you have anything that you would like to add about why we choose to restock the lake? So I can respond to Randy St. John and tell him why I think this is important ecologically, environmentally, for the health of the lake?
I think the stocking, as I understand it, is trout.
Yes.
And I don't think the trout breed in Tuxedo Lake because they need streams, and the streams that are coming into Tuxedo Lake are not big enough. So they, they're put in, and eventually, they'll die. Or they'll be caught, or both. Any case, it's really a question of, what is the, what do the fishermen, do the fishermen really want to have these trout? I mean, the lake is not a natural fishing. It's a lake that works a lot. It's not natural. And it's not easy to bring it back to being natural once you have other things in the lake. So I'm not going to take a strong stand to get stocking. I'm sort of a, I don't really think there's a need for it. There are plenty of bass in the lake that people could catch. But I'm not a fisherman. So if people really want to catch trout, then there probably needs to be some stocking.
Right.
How much stocking, I don't know. I mean, maybe there should be, maybe we should sort of look into this at some point.
Okay, well, I just want to note that the winners will be selected from the following categories. It doesn't, it includes the heaviest bass, the largest bass, the longest trout, the longest bluegill, and the largest bass off the docks. Now, is this catch and release or not catch and release?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know.
But in any event, it's, it strikes me as being an inopportune time to say, why do we need to restock the lake? Because our fishermen are going to empty it anyway. So we'll, we'll, we'll get on, we'll, we'll deal with the club on that particular issue. Yes, Jay?
I, Jay Rashka. I would point out that the Tuxedo Club does not have sole fishing rights on the lake.
Right. You are correct. And they also asked about the contribution from the Village Boat Club. So we'll, we'll look into that issue. But since we're not going to get a response to them by Thursday, despite what their committee may want.
Is there an optimum time of year to restock a lake?
I don't have an answer to that. Does anybody in the audience wish to volunteer an answer? Nobody knows. Okay, well, that was just my point with respect to.
It's like a negotiation to me.
Well, I would also say, has a single person complained about not enough trout in the lake?
I think the fishermen do, the people who fish.
I haven't heard of that.
Like a person with a name wrote a letter and said, hey, can you put more trout in the lake?
Well, if you ask the fellow at the boat club, who's the one who's gotten the fishing going, he says, yes, it has a lot of excitement if you're out there fishing.
Okay.
And he, he made, I forget if now it's the right time also. I think he said sometime October or something is when he said.
Okay.
You mentioned the dock master at the, at the club. I would also suggest maybe you speak with someone at the Village Boat Club because I know that there's a, a number of serious fishermen out of the Village Boat Club that are pretty knowledgeable about fishing the lake. So they could probably give some, some input.
I've had informal conversations with some of the leadership, and it doesn't seem like there's eagerness to stock the lake. So that's why I'm asking, has anybody actually asked? So I guess somebody has.
Yeah.
And then the next question would be, is our lake's manager, AJ, I think it's appropriate for him to have an official opinion to share with us if we're going to invest 16, 18,000 dollars.
No, a lot of money. Yeah.
I can follow up with AJ.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll follow up with.
And I guess the question is the one you were really asking, which is, is there a benefit, an environmental or other benefit to having the lake stocked?
Yeah. Josh, if you wouldn't mind, can I ask AJ if there's a way to, because this has been suggested informally, to create pools that are attractive to the trout as they swim up the, some of the tributaries to the lake? In fact, if we could create areas for them to reproduce?
Oh, interesting, okay.
Like for, like the hatchery, kind of model it after.
Yeah, because there is the brook, the warwick brook in the Weewaw.
Has like pools that they can.
I don't know, I haven't looked closely enough.
Yeah, I mean, just question to AJ, and I think that's something I'll try to do.
That's a, that's a great, great question because I remember when over at the Brook, on Brook Road, when they used to come up over the waterfall. They'd go back.
Wow.
I could go in as a kid and actually catch them in my hands because it was significant. But, but that, the brooks have all kind of.
Yeah, from, from what I've heard is it's just moving some rocks around that I, obviously, I have no experience or knowledge of that.
I'll do the, I'll do the work.
Thanks. Thanks, Joe. Okay.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, Elizabeth.
Which one?
Do you have a question?
Oh, our village, our esteemed village clerk. You have your hand up.
Because I was the second person to put my hand up, so you can go to Ms. Cottonore.
No, no.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say very quickly, Joshua, you mentioned about the trout. And if there's any, I think you said something like an ecological benefit. And I know that Peter Van Zent had written a letter, which I distributed to the Board, I think, last month. He wrote the letter a long time ago, but I redistributed it to the Board at his request last month. And he described in some detail what the trout do that help keep the lake ecologically balanced. I don't remember specifically what it was, but it had to do with them eating things that eat other things that are, you know, that keep, that are good for the lake. So I just wanted to put that for you to consider.
All right, perfect. Thank you.
As our environmental expert, we'll assign this one to trustee Sher. Excellent. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda, as trustee Brooke mentioned, is an executive session. And so for this, at this point, what we're going to do is make a motion to enter executive session. I will make that motion. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's discuss potential pending litigation and for attorney-client consultation.
Sure. For, for those reasons, thank you.